It's 7:30.
Yeah.
Call the village board meeting to order, start with a pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, one good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Starting tonight with a public hearing to consider amending the village code of the village of Baldenville, Chapter 268-6, providing that all nonconforming signs in existence at the time of the adoption of the current sign code be discontinued and removed on or before August 1st, 2025, and that any major modifications or changes to existing nonconforming signs requires the signs to become conforming to the provisions of the code. Next is reading the proof of the publication, or did I just do that?
Nope. I can do it.
Okay, good.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York and pursuant to resolution of the village board of the village of Baldenville adopted July 7th, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the village board of the village of Baldenville at the Village Hall, 16 West Tennessee Street, Baldenville, New York, 13027, on the 21st day of July 2022 at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law amending the village code of the village of Baldenville, Chapter 268-6, providing that all nonconforming signs in existence at the time of the adoption of the current code be discontinued and removed on or before August 1st, 2025, and that any major modifications or changes to existing nonconforming signs requires the signs to become conforming to the provisions of the code. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the village clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the village board of the village of Baldenville dated July 7th, 2022, Baldenville, New York. Maureen Butler, Village Clerk.
This is that opportunity. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Hearing any, is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposal? Hearing no comments, could I have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we'll move on to the regular meeting of the village board. Once again, for the audience, I want to point out that our mayor is on the television screen. I'm not that person. Could I have a motion approving the village board meetings from July 7th, 2022?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Public comments. Is there anyone wishing to address the board? And if you would, could you come to the mic, give us your name, your address, and state your business?
Sally, I live on Mechanic Street, and I just wanted to say I'm really against the rezoning proposal on Phillips Street. And my neighbors are too, but they didn't come. So I'm speaking, just not for myself, but we'd really hate to see that, especially in light of the traffic problems, because 240 cars approximately added to what we have right now, I don't see it going well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do your folks wish to address the board? Okay. Now you can move along to trustees' comments. How about, we'll start with Eric.
I'll just stay to the agenda, stick to the agenda tonight.
I'll just comment and say thank you to all of the local businesses and local and nonlocal residents who participated in the Margarita Fest fundraiser this past weekend. I think it was a good success. I don't think that there was any issues that the police had to deal with. It was a nice event overall, and the volunteer center is always appreciative of the support. Other than that, I will stick to the agenda.
And since I'm a trustee, I'm gonna jump in here. I'd like to add some items to the agenda. Sorry, Jody. I'd like to, I guess, where are we? I guess it's E. A motion authorizing the DPW superintendent to fill a seasonal horticultural aid position at $17 an hour. And then F, authorize the DPW superintendent to contract for emergency repair work with DE Taroli Incorporated to fix a water main line, not to exceed $45,000. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda. Oh, wait.
Sorry, I just got a quote from that company, and can we make the ceiling $50,000 on it? I just got a quote a minute ago on what they think it's gonna cost.
How much are you contributing?
Do we take that from the sewer?
No. That would be nice.
You can't move a sewer line while he's in there? Okay, could we make that $50,000? And I will stick to the agenda, again.
Okay. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Baldenville marching band. They're heading to Cooperstown for the baseball Hall of Fame, Fame for the Parade of Legends this weekend on Saturday. So it's a huge, big deal for them, and some of the Hall of Famers that are gonna be there are Reggie Jackson, Joe Torre, Johnny Bench, Goose Gosage. So I think it's a cool thing for them. So other than that, the agenda.
Yeah, I'll just stick with the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a couple things. Wanted to send a salute out to Renee Upfold, who runs the salon down near Manic Seafood. She was chosen as the Chamber of Commerce's Businessperson of the Year. I don't know how many of you know Renee, but she's an extremely hard worker, has really worked hard to make that business what it is, and we had an unusual friendship early on because when I was a college kid working at LI Chemical at the same time Mr. Stevens was, her grandfather worked over at Willis Avenue where I was working. And so I got to be good friends with Herbie Upfold, who was one of the nicest guys you'd ever wanna meet, and a fun guy, great sense of humor, always pranking the summer kids. And I happened to see her on Facebook one day commenting something about B-Ville, and I sent her a private message and just said, "Are you in relation to Herbie?" And she said, "Oh, my gosh, that's my grandpa." And so we come back and forth with a couple stories, and then we managed to run into each other not too long after that, and again, talking about her grandpa. And so whenever I see that she's done something nice, I just know how proud Herbie would be of Renee, so I wanted to salute her. I wanted to echo what Megan said about the Margarita Fest. The volunteer center really knows how to put on a fundraiser. I mean, those tickets were sold out, what, four or five days before the event? And the pictures show people packing the different establishments. Looked like a great time for everybody, and it's the highlight of our summer season every year, so that's great. I did get an email today from an old friend of the village, Christine All, who used to work in the codes office. She now works in the superintendent's office at the school, and she was wanting to say hi to everybody, but she also was trying to set up a meeting. The new superintendent would like to chat with me, just get to know me a little bit, and I get to know him, so we're set up for next Thursday, do a Zoom meeting, which apparently he does a lot of. And I also heard from the Little League committee. We'll be meeting soon. They have a couple projects that they would like discussed, so I will be getting ahold of the people who are listed in our agreement as being part of the committee, somebody from Lysander, somebody from Van Buren, another person from the village besides me, which will, I will tell Chuck that's gonna be him, a couple people from Little League, and somebody from the Reeves family. And then we get together, they put out what their projects are, and we have a discussion and like 99 times out of 100 approve what they wanna do. They run a great operation over there. It's a lot of fun. If you've ever never been to that Little League facility, drop over sometime, and you see a lot of cars, because there's usually games going on, two, three, sometimes even off, like four fields. They just do a great job, and it's great for our kids to have a place like that to play Little League baseball and softball. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, moving ahead to department heads. Our attorney.
Just one item, just from the board members that may or may not have seen this. The governor signed an executive order which further extends the emergency relative to virtual meetings through August 13th. So the local law that we adopted relative to the way that members could participate in village board meetings virtually really won't become effective until the second meeting in August, unless it's extended again. But it is extended through the 13th of August. But other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Thank you. Our deputy village clerk.
I'll just stick to the agenda.
Our treasurer is not here this evening. Senior center coordinator.
So there's a lot going on at the senior center right now. But first, I wanna thank the DPW because they're visibly installing our flat-screen TVs for our Wii bowling and other programs, so that's been something we've been looking forward to. So thanks for that. The Rotary Picnic is happening this summer. The date for that is August 24th. It's a Wednesday. It's in the late afternoon, early evening, from 4:00 to 5:30. You do need a reservation, so please call the senior center and make your reservation before August 19th. I know everyone's hearing a lot about food prices going up and how that's impacting families and anybody that needs to purchase groceries. So we have several things I wanna make sure people know about. One, this is specifically to seniors, which is the farmer's market coupon program. They were a little bit late with the distribution from the county because of a printing problem, but we do have them now. They're for folks 60 and over. There are some income guidelines, so you can call and check on that. The distribution date is Friday, July 29th, 10:30, and that's on a first-come, first-served basis. This is $25 worth of coupons or vouchers to purchase produce from local farmers markets. So come on and take advantage of that. Also, this is the second year we've done this, produce boxes. This is part of the Healthy Schools and Community Program, and Emmy Farm provides the produce. It's $16. This is open to anyone. There's no age restriction, there's no income eligibility requirement. It's $16 for a half a bushel of produce, and there's an order date and a pickup date and all of that information you can get from us, but the one coming up next will be 7:25, so next Monday is the order date and pickup date of July 28th. And as I said, that's open to anybody, so if that would help your family out, come on over. And we always have the Food Science Program going on. That's a monthly program through the Food Bank of Central New York, and that's basically a food co-op that is also open to anyone, any age, and no income restrictions. And that's $20.50 for what they call a unit or a package, and then the opportunity to purchase some other things for less than what it would cost you in the store. So just wanna make sure folks know those things are available to them to help them out a little bit. And on a different note, Monday, the 25th, we're having a mini craft sale, Christmas in July, open to the public from 11:00 to 3:00. Come on over and take advantage of that. And we're also getting ready for our car show, which is August 8th. That's a Monday evening also, from 5:00 to 7:30. There's food provided by Canal Side Bistro, and music, cars, and a lot of fun. So come on out for that. Everyone's welcome. And I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Moving on to our superintendent of public works. In your garden, it's fantastic.
In the garden, it's fancy, and the fence.
We got a garden opened up for them this year. They've done a fantastic job over there with it. It's better than my garden. August 15th, we're still on track for paving that's gonna start for us. I haven't heard from the contractor yet, but that's what they're rejecting now. Next Tuesday, we're hoping to start with a project we've been trying to get done for a bunch of years. The April money's gonna help us do that. It's the detention pond up on Smokey Hollow Road. It's just been difficult to get in there, and it's been a mess, and it looks like that's gonna start this Tuesday, and that'll be fantastic if that taken care of. We have a bunch of detention ponds that we need to get after, and this is one of the tough ones. The playground was delivered, a community park. Their contractor came in, set it up. It's done. The Lions Club's gonna start on theirs here soon. Part of our portion is we have to put the six-by-sixes down, we have to put the tarp down, we had to dig it out, which we did that, and get the mulch in there. So we're gonna start working on that next week, we hope. That's gonna look nice when it's done. Part of the agreement with the Lions Club is we have to help them put theirs up and drill holes for them, and we're just waiting to hear from them to how they wanna do that, when they wanna do that. But I think when it's done, it's gonna look nice down there. They'll have two swing sets and then the gym thing there. It'll look really nice when it's done. We're striping some parking lots. The cottage restaurant, the cottage lot was pretty much done. We had some cars that we couldn't move, but we'll get in there and finish it. The square is done. We're gonna do Mercer Park, we're gonna do Tappan Street, put the lines down Tappan Street, we're gonna do Downer Street. I believe we're gonna have enough to get onto Canton Street and re-mark the park over there on Canton Street also.
Chuck, when you do like Canton Street, for example?
Yes.
Talking the center line, or we do center line and five lines?
No, we were just doing the center lines. That was what was there, and we're pretty thrilled with the money we got and the budget for it this year, and we're able to do a lot of it. The contractor actually lives in town, and he's just been, like everybody else, hard to get ahold of. He had a window the other day, and they came in and did the square, and they did most of that, and they're gonna come back and do some more. I left Mike a note. They're gonna probably lay it out Downer and Tappan at night. They might even do it after midnight, because it's just so much traffic, and be over there trying to get some of that laid out and do it the first time. Other than that, unless you have any questions? I'm good.
Now, we'll move along to our codes enforcement officer.
I'll stick with the agenda tonight.
Okay. And finally, to our police chief.
Thank you, Bruce. Just wanna remind everyone, if you go away this summer on vacation for a week or two, we have our vacation house check program. You notify one of our clerical staff, and we'll have an officer check the residence while you're away periodically, and then when you return home, I'll send you a letter and let you know how many times an officer checked your home. You'll leave us a contact information for yourself and someone local. If there's an issue, we can report it to both you and them, so it can be dealt with. Normally, we don't have any issues at all, but just a nice service we provide to our residents, so don't hesitate to take advantage of that. Other than that, any last questions?
I avail myself of it infrequently when I leave town, and I would recommend anybody. You lose nothing.
Yeah, no, it doesn't cost anything. It's free.
Excellent. Moving on to the agenda, pending business. Could I have a motion approving the proposed local law providing that all nonconforming signs in existence at the time of the adoption of the current sign code be discontinued and removed on or before August 1st, 2025, and that any major modifications or changes to existing nonconforming signs requires the signs to become conforming to the provisions of the code?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we ever get an idea how many there were?
The best I can come up with, looking through the signs that are in town without variances that are oversized, is five. There's a couple of large signs out Syracuse Street, and then there's a couple of, well, there's three that are not quite as large. Those are very large, almost billboard signs that, you know, that are obvious, obviously too large, so.
And this gives everybody over three years to figure it out.
Right, it gives them three years for the use of that sign to make preparations to change the sign or to look into applying for a variance and possibly, you know, going that route. It does give them the opportunity still to apply for a variance to the zoning board of appeals, so.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to new business. Could I have a motion to set a public hearing date for Thursday, August 4th, 2022, at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to change the zoning district of property located at 19 Phillips Street, tax map parcel 005-point-dash-01-dash-03-point-1. I don't know how to do this, Dick. From its current designation of R1 residential to a zoning district to the R2 residential zoning district.
I'll make a motion for a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll second that for the hearing.
Okay, is there any? I'm gonna throw out a little discussion.
Go ahead.
I don't even see why we hold a public hearing. Frankly, I can't support moving to an R2 because it does not provide any benefit that I can see to our village and community as a whole. So if they're set on doing an R2, I'm set on not approving it. So I don't even see a sense in having a public hearing. But that's my opinion. I just don't see this project is gonna bring in less tax revenue than if it were single-family homes. I just don't see, we have a lot of apartments already in our community. Apartments tend to be occupied more by a transient individual. That's not usually where you set up to make your lifelong home. That tends not to be somebody that contributes to our community. I just don't see this as something that I can say Baldenville needs. So therefore, I'm, those are my comments, and so be it.
Greg, while we're on that subject, then you wanna mention about all of the other stuff that was maybe considered with the email that you sent this week? Remember the one about all the other stuff that you've already committed to? And all the stuff that's happening in the towns?
Oh, you mean?
Like we still have future development on lock? We still have stuff that's out of our jurisdiction that's happening upon coopting overlook and...
You're talking about properties that are either already approved or future development that's being proposed. Right now, I can only speak to the village. I don't know about other plans out there, but in the village, approved and being proposed, there's over 513 housing units. Most of those are in apartments. You get 208 for Tri-County Mall, the 140 total for this Phillips Street, 35 additional units on...
Lock Street.
Lock Street.
Smokey Hollow.
Smokey Hollow is another 52 units.
And then we do know just outside of our village.
Well, we've got other subdivision that are being proposed. We've got over 50 homes that are proposed, that have been proposed to the planning board for Baldwin Hill. We've got 28 homes that have been proposed for Gentry Street.
Lock Street has?
Well, Lock Street has 10 single-family homes plus 25 other parts.
Are we doing something with Downer? Continuing with Downer?
The Tri-County Mall?
Right, Downer's, I just call it Tri-County Mall because that's what we're used to, but that's the phase two would be 208 dwelling units.
Okay, yeah.
So it's a little over 513. That's the number I came up with.
Right.
But that doesn't count, you know, the developments on the Grigo farm or, you know, Lysander Preserve or Mary Beth. Right, but it all contributes to our, you know, downtown, not only traffic, but hopefully people that would patronize local businesses.
Can I ask you a question? I remember when we first started talking about this project, we had talked about changing this parcel to a PVD.
The board has the option of doing that, but I was requested by counsel for the applicant to move forward with the R2. It's up to the board whether they approve, disapprove, or modify, again, depending on the advice of the planning board. But this does not preclude that at all.
And the planning board meets Tuesday, right?
Yes.
And so hopefully by, for that August 4th meeting, we will have a submission from the planning board. However detailed it is, I'm not sure, but at least they're gonna look into it. I know John, we had a meeting today with the developers, and John Tenow, the head of the planning board, was there. John is very deep in this project as far as exploring all the ins and outs. He's written a press release type of thing, which you all should have a copy of. There's a lot of stuff on one side, a lot of stuff on the other side, a lot to consider. I told them today, I said, "I have concerns about traffic, not just on Phillips Street, but that area, if you're all familiar, there's a lot of short blocks there, or if you get stuck in traffic, traffic's gonna start backing up into, what, Nida Street? And there's multitude of ways people can exit that area, but if they go through the village, you know, we all love the village, but it's pretty, I mean, you have to be honest and say, we do have a traffic problem at certain times of the day, certain days of the week. This would not make that better. It would obviously contribute to that. There's other things that we have to look at. Somebody said, "Well, what about the score?" So I'm not sure that's something that we need to worry about so much. I did express a concern about our water supply and how much we would tax it. Chuck has sort of said he doesn't think that's an issue. You know, I trust Chuck, but there are other issues. We have an awful lot of apartments on the agenda to still be built, and how many apartments do we want in our village? Do we wanna become an apartment of village, of village of apartments? I mean, there is that concern. A lot to think about. I hope you read the stuff that John gave me for those of you who aren't real familiar with the site and some of the questions. And Greg, we're very fortunate to have a code officer who really is on top of things. Greg can answer an awful lot of your questions. It's good to be prepared. I mean, Bruce is prepared. He's always told us that. He's ready. And I think that when we come in here for that meeting, we should make sure we understand the situation before we vote, you know, to give him a zone change or not to give a zone change. Don't do it because somebody next to you is voting one way or the other. If you wanna, you can call Greg, you can call me, John Tenow. I know some of you that will, you know, know him from planning zoning type stuff. And the planning board meet is, I believe it's Tuesday, and you're certainly welcome to go to that and hear any discussion that might happen there to give you a better thing. And on top of this, we're also gonna get a request for Smokey Hollow, which isn't gonna be for a zone change, but they're gonna go to the planning board, and, you know, there's issues up there. So we're gonna stay on top of it and be prepared.
Mr. Mayor, have there been any positive letters written to the office about this Phillips Street apartment proposal so far? Because I know we had, we've had the ones come with concerns. Have there been anybody that's come with positive feedback at all?
Not that I've seen. And I have not heard from anybody. I've not gotten emails or phone calls from anybody who thinks it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Everybody I've talked to has concerns. Now, the developers think they can address those concerns. That remains to be seen. So I would ask you all to try to look into the information as much as you can. I had a concern that, I believe that either Tanory Creek or a part of Tanory Creek runs through that area, a creek area that feeds Tanory Creek, and we've had concerns with that over the years, with the sports ball and the ambulance for getting flooded. I'd like somebody to address that for me. That's not... I'd like somebody to address that for me, that that's not going to impact that. You know, it's not gonna put more water into that water where it can't handle it once it gets into the village. So there's, there's a lot of issues. I will say one thing, it is, it's designed for people of lower income, which we don't have a lot of that in the village. It's also a percentage of it's going to be for developmentally disabled, will be reserved for that. But I have a concern because if you remember, legacy apartments were first built, that was for seniors only? And then at some point, you know, so, so that was okay in the area because it was gonna be for seniors and everybody was excited. And then it got to a certain point, they dropped that, so it's open to everybody. I'd like to make sure that if this is going to be, a portion of it's gonna be for disadvantaged, developmentally disabled type people, that we don't suddenly just say, well, okay, I guess they don't serve those people anymore. If you go over to Conifer, you'll find out that Conifer is not all seniors anymore.
Dick, my understanding is that if we approve R2, they may build this, they may build something else, it could be entirely different, just what you're describing, that the R2 doesn't have any restrictions. When Bob proposed to them a PDD, they asked for this instead. That's one, one reason I'm opposed to it. They're not asking for the PDD. Although I've heard comments that they're now open to it. That's not what this motion is. So I think we need to say no. They can come back and ask for a PDD.
And the PDD will give us a lot more
Control.
Control over what is designed there if we do decide something would go in there, so.
It's the right vehicle to use.
In our, in our meeting today, Jamie Sutton, the planning board attorney, also had that opinion that, that the PDD gives the, the village different, more controls over, and R2 is base zoning. Now, there still has to be site plan approval, but if they're within the limits of the code, then they're allowed to build, basically. But with the PDD, that sets your limits, you know, that through the site plan process and approvals.
I, I would just caution the board as well regarding some of the comments from the mayor, legacy apartments specifically. My parents lived there up until, you know, their last year residency at a local nursing home. But to the mayor's point about the apartment's supposed to be 55 and older, that project was approved with that mine and a certain number of parking spots, based upon the fact that many seniors only have one vehicle, whether the two of them live in there or what. In the winter now, there's so many families with multiple vehicles living there because of snow, they're parking on Legacy Drive itself. We're ticketing those vehicles, obviously, because Chuck's folks can't plow. There's not enough parking spots in the community now because there's so many people with vehicles. I would also caution the board about a vehicle that's, or about a business that's located on East Genesee Street that will go nameless, that apparently there was a handshake agreement when they went in, that they would not serve anything other than drinks from their drive-thru, which over the years has changed. And Trusty Stubbs has commented to me about that, that business and traffic backed up outside of it because of the drive-through and people purchasing sandwiches and other things in the morning. So over time, I think some of those things that the mayor's talked about, a certain percentage for this group of people, a certain percentage for, for this group of people that don't make this amount of money or whatever the standards might be. Over time, 10, 15, 20 years from now, nobody will likely from this board still be here. And whoever is running that will then maybe not abide by whatever agreement or handshake or otherwise was in, was in place. So I would just caution the board from, from our point of view, experientially, in the issues it might create, not today, but I worry, you know, the next chief or the two chiefs after me might have to deal with whether it be traffic issues, whether it be parking issues in the winter, whether it be roadway clearing, whether it be, you know, traffic up on Phillips Street or whatever, that those things are taken into consideration when, when this board makes its ultimate decision.
Any other discussion?
So by not voting to have a public hearing, are we essentially saying we're not open to R2 at all? I mean, are we closing the chapter on that?
If we vote?
No.
Because it could be, you're saying in a sense, no zone change whatsoever, even to a PDD?
No, it's not. We say no change to a current designation of R1 to R2.
No, I understand, but I guess my, my, my point is that by not having, I mean, as a result of the public hearing, and the matter's been referred to SACPA as well, you can amend the local law and if you want to allow any zone change whatsoever, modify it to the extent that you create a, a planned development district, or you can just deny any zone change and let it stay R1. But I, I would caution against at least allowing the applicant to come before the board for a public hearing.
That's what I was wondering, what we're setting ourselves up for if we close it down without at least getting the, the input, whether we
Yeah, I mean, the legislative decision is up to the board, and there's no standards by which you are measured, such as a planning board or zoning board might be. It's a legislative function, and it can't be reviewed. However, I, they, they do have the right to ask for the zone change, and I, I do have concern about not at least allowing the public hearing.
So could we modify this motion to set a public hearing date to consider a proposed local law changed to the zoning district of property at 19 Phillips Street tax map stuff, period?
Well, the, the local law is proposed is to R2, but that doesn't mean that you can't change it.
May I wouldn't mind doing, can we even do a motion for a PDD there?
No, because it's legislation that's before the board. No, you can't, unless you want to ask that the legislation be changed and sent back to the board. And I would, it's, you can't, you can't have a public hearing on a matter that's not before you.
So if we have a public hearing, as it's written, we still have the ability to definitely come back and have a second public hearing from R1 to a PDD?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Closing the door on the whole thing.
Right.
Going through the process of getting to
The point is, you're, you've got the same issues one way or the other, and I, I would, I would think that it, the board might just as well go ahead and, and deal with it and then make its final decision with, with the planning board recommendation, the thoughts from the public and the SACPA recommendation, whatever that may be.
Right, and we just want to make sure that, you know, that the public know right now that we are not actually approving a designation change in the zone today. We're just setting up the public hearing, and then August 4th, then we'll be able to have, you know, actually make a motion, so.
And, and you don't have to, you don't have to vote on it.
Yeah.
No, you can continue to extend the time within which to
Go under procedure.
Adopt anything or to deny it, so it just puts the matter on the agenda.
At that public hearing, you'll be, then there will be a motion on our agenda that night to approve
Right, and you could table it, or you can, yeah, you can table it, you can have it, you can have it changed, you can do all sorts of things with it.
Turned Baldwin though, give me, can we just, is there a way to bypass it tonight though and not entertain the R2 and just entertain, jump right into that PDD? No way to do that?
Nope.
Because I feel like we're gonna kind of spin our wheels here and just, if we're not interested in the R2 at all, why do we do a public hearing on that? Let's just do the PDD public hearing, jump to that stage, but that's not possible.
I think we ought to be careful because, you know, we're gonna get a planning board recommendation which may solidify what we're talking about. They may come in and say, we don't think that this X, Y, and Z work. And then it gives us even further cause to, to go in a direction that we sound like we're heading in right now. But to avoid eliminating them before they've had a chance to even have their, their day in front of us might not be the best way to go. So I think, I think we should go ahead with the public hearing and
That public hearing may bring out
Does we have a whole tale?
We had 15 people in here, there may be 100 people in here against it. So I wouldn't mind entertaining the, the public hearing to see the sheer volume of actually who's for or against it.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear anybody who is for it. I know we haven't had anybody, but if somebody is strong enough to come into the meeting and actually be in favor of it, I'd like to hear what they have to say as well.
Good point.
On the matter.
The other, the other advantage of a planned development district is the village would have the ability to limit the amount of, if the village felt that you wanted to have low-income housing or housing for the disadvantaged, but wanted to severely limit it and provide something, but not something that would cause problems in the neighborhood. And that's something a planned development district can do that an R2 cannot do.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for all that good work, Bob.
Any more discussion? If not, then we need to vote. All those in favor? Say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So carries by whatever that number is.
Five to two?
That's a good
Is that five to two?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So the date of August 4th, 2022, at 7:30, there'll be a public hearing to discuss the change from R1 to R2. Get your neighbors out here.
I am persistent.
Please.
Next item, motion authorizing treasurer Mark Baker to attend the fall training school for city and village officials in Saratoga from September 12th through 16th, 2022, at an amount not to exceed $1,950.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I would like, if, if the treasurer was here, I'd ask him if this is a budgeted item, but it is. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item C, motion to accept the following gifts from the Canton Woods Senior Center in 501 C3 Board, Senior Activity Committee, 3 65-inch Vizio TVs, a V series, and a wall-mounting hardware.
Vote second.
I just want to share that Chuck said they installed these, so this is good that we accept them. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Carried. This, next item D, discussion action authorizing the appointment of Matthew Clavelli, DPW Labor, at a rate of $23.60 per hour, to start date to be August 1st, 2022. He would be assigned to the Highway Department.
Make a motion.
I'll second it. No, he's second. Want to comment there, Mr. Superintendent, or not?
He'll be replacing Paul Ashbury. Paul Ashbury's retiring this, this week, and this is his last week, and Matt, I've known Matt for, for quite some time. I knew him through the Fire Department years ago. He has a Class A truck driver's license. I think he'll be a good addition to the Highway Department, and it's difficult to get people with that license and in the village, and so we're thrilled that we're able to get all of them.
So you mentioned he used to be in the Fire Department, and he still is, but so is he obviously then probably a resident of the area?
He is a resident of the village, yep. He lives in, he lives right in the village, so we're happy to be able to get all of them and
Okay.
Start next week.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't make a motion.
We didn't even make a motion yet?
We did.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no one, carries. Okay, item E, who is to authorize the DPW superintendent to fill a seasonal horticultural aid position at $17 an hour?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Chuck's has a challenge of keeping the gardens looking good, and it's being challenged, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Go get your gardeners.
Thank you.
Now, authorize a DPW superintendent, motion to authorize a DPW superintendent to contract for emergency repair work with DeTrolle Incorporated to fix a water main not to exceed $50,000.
We, we have a, a water main that needs to be repaired. It's on the Nida Street, and it's, it's under the
How's that?
How's that? We, we have a water main to repair on Eastern Nida Street, and it's under the cul-de-sac. It's, it's a little better than 10 feet deep, you know, it's, it's nothing, we exposed it today. The water department got down on there, but it's just too deep for us to go after, and it's, it's a big job. We have a county contract with DeTrolle. Something that's gotta be addressed, and the sooner the better. And actually, as we were speaking, their quote came through, and it's gonna, we just have to do this, and there's, there's nothing our forces can do. It'll be a big project, but
And you just said they're on like state contract or something with an hourly rate or whatever?
They have, they have a day rate, and it's the same outfit that we're using up on Smoky Hollow Road. They're just fantastic. They do great work, and we're hoping it'll go well.
So could I have a motion?
Vote second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no one, it carries. Another one, where you check. We don't have any executive sessions? We may go home while the sun is out? No, we can't. Have a motion to pay bills is audited?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nobody? Let's see what the time is. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:17 PM? I'll make a motion. Second?
I will second. You will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Y'all two weeks?
Whoa, two weeks?